All this meeting to order and note the time is 6:31 PM. I think the first thing we all do is do the pledge of allegiance. And so if everybody can stand and look at the flag in the back, then we can begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Tori?
Yes, do we need to...
Can you help us with this mindfulness?
Yes. I can. I'm gonna stand here because I have my back below, my back facing right. So welcome. So excited to see everyone here. So the way we start our board meetings is we just take a couple minutes to breathe and kind of remind ourselves of why we're here, what we're here for, and at what cost since we are governing. So I just want you to find a nice comfortable seat. I'm just gonna squat here so you don't hurt your back today. And settle in your chair, settle here. So if you can close your eyes if you feel comfortable with that. We can take a deep breath in and breathe out. Take another deep breath in. You'll feel your spine rise up. And then just settle in your body. One more time. We take this time to come, to arrive from where we've come from and to create space. This again reorients us to why we're here, who we're here for, for what, and at what cost in terms of governance. And your next exhale, we all get going. We'll get started.
Thank you, Tori.
You're welcome.
Um, so the next item is agenda review and adjustments. One of the things we wanted to add, the budget meeting minutes from the last meeting did not make it into the consent agenda. I'm just asking for us to move it to the consent agenda. And we'll pass it out here.
Thank you.
We need to make a motion. And then the other thing that I asked that we kind of rearranged some of the order because we have a, it seems like the highlights of our meetings were increasing population, that the public comment section. And I'm hoping that we can move the public comments section ahead of the focus on learning. And have our people be able to voice their concerns for five minutes. Is everybody good with that?
Yes, sir.
So can I have a motion to move that?
So who?
Second?
Second.
Yay? I forget how he does this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So four, so we'll do that. So we're gonna open it up to public comments. I think one of the first things that, what we do just for public comments, this is a time for the community to be able to express their concerns or, you know, even upbeat items to share with the community, with the school board about their concerns. I know that we have a petition from the Nepali community and I'm hoping that Nick could just translate for us to hear the concerns. And feel free to step up close to the mic if you want. And I remind you that because I think there are other groups here that need translation to kind of maybe pause every three sentences so that translation can occur to the rest of the community members in the audience.
Okay, so there's a person from, uh, my name is Yam. I'm the Nepali interpreter. So I just get this person and it's based on the transportation. Let me read out. Respected School Board, Schools for Tannen, Weniski Elementary, Middle and High School. So the subject is requesting for two-way bus management. So we, the school, guardian or family will be repeating or voicing the same thing in every meeting that we need the transportation back and forth for our children. This is all because our kids get sick during the winter because of the cold and the doctor advised us not to let their kids to be in the cold for a long time. So this is a very basic and genuine need. So that's why we, like, the sign up for forty to fifty people sign up here, like to request one more time to the board to arrange the bus two ways. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna open it up for any other community members who may have a comment that they would like to add and in addition or on a different topic. Feel free to, please come step, state your name in the microphone, yeah. And if you could, please stop every two, three sentences so that we have time to translate messages. Thank you.
I'm Kate Muzi, I'm the executive director of the Winkie Partnership for Global. And Hannah St. Don is our youth mobilization coordinator. So we just wanted to stop by and update the school board on some of the work we're doing. And also just continue to extend the invitation to, you know, come to any of our events or meet with us. We wanna work closely on multiple levels with the school and the city since all those, those are some of the best ways to impact youth health. And our focus is on substance use prevention with youth with the goal of reducing.
Can we have some time?
Yeah, so I think I've met some of you, but maybe not everyone. So a lot of our work aligns really closely, I would say, with the mission of the school. We all want healthy, productive, and successful lives for the youth in the community. And one of the main things we do at this school is the Above the Influence After-School Group. We've partnered with the Twenty First Century After-School Learning Program for a few years now. So today with our, one of our youth, we have two youth on our board. One is Lucas Zverias and the other one is Steffi Siki. And their participation in our group in middle school has led to them continuing with us in greater capacity in high school. And so today, for the half-day, for example, Steffi coordinated, Steffi and Lucas helped coordinate this whole program where the students decided what they wanted to cook for a meal and have a potluck together, do a little learning altogether, and then kind of a question and answer time. And one of the things that came out of that was, one of the things that came out of that was one of, Steffi asked the students to share some of their learning and they did about different substances. And that led to a discussion of what are, you know, where do you get your information about substance use? Because there's a lot of stuff on the internet and a lot of it is not accurate. So that's part of what our goal is with that group, to make sure they have accurate information. So I guess to summarize, it's really exciting to do this work because it is possible to prevent substance use. And if you're, if you don't use any substance before you're twenty-one, you have a ninety-nine percent chance of not developing a substance use disorder. So that is our vision. And through this program, students can become, or gain leadership skills, attend conferences that help them learn those as well as increase their peer relationships and strengthen that aspect of it. Have fun, that is very important. And basically, you know, take their own vision and we can support that, which is what I think is really nice about some of the work we're doing right now. And two more things. One is, we're having a forum and we'd love for as many of people here who can to attend on March eighteenth. And it will actually be here at the school. It's kind of a follow-up to some forums that we did in years past. Julian Portia, who used to be on the school board, facilitated those. And this is kind of a follow-up because throughout that work as a state, I think, and at least in Chittenden County, we've talked about prevention as being especially important and that opioids is kind of like the end of that. And so you need to start with prevention in general with all those substances. So it will be on that theme. And so I hope that you all join us. And there'll be lots of ways that you can interact with this work and lots of ways to take on leadership roles, big and small, whatever your capacity is. Everyone can do something to make sure that our kids grow up as healthy as possible.
Okay. I'm Hannah. Again, a little background on myself. I attended St. Mike's. I graduated in twenty eighteen. We have a program called Kids Night Out, which many of your kids may have attended. So I see some familiar faces in the school when I'm running the ATI program. So I already kind of feel a connection to the community because I've been here for a while. And this position is new to me and I'm excited to grow it with Weniski.
One, I just wanna offer too, we can always talk to staff and faculty about our work and we do trainings periodically. Could be information about substance use rates in the, in the Chittenden County and/or, you know, people just want tips for like how to talk about it with kids in a way that supports their development, so that was good.
Thank you.
So at this moment, any other folks want public, make a statement? I will close public comment, but I'm... We gave copies to all the board members.
Today our parents have to read that. It is very...
Do you mind coming to the front of, if you...
Over there?
Hello. Good night. Thank you for having us. Really appreciate the time and the opportunity to speak up to the board, especially for the time where the budget is being decided and how it's gonna be distributed. Parents are very concerned that they are not able to be here. They still, one of the comments, I received today an email from Kristen saying that Thursday, January second, is gonna be one of the last meetings. They, parents were informed today of such a meeting. They were wondering why it's not being done Friday instead after the, explaining that Wednesdays and Thursdays are very difficult for them. And there is almost impossible for them to come because they are working, they're in the middle of work. Many of the comments, priority for many of the families, especially Indian-American families, is the bus. Second is more big, more new building. Third, teachers. They are saying that if they don't have a bus, many more, many more students might leave because they, they don't have a reliable transportation. Safety is a major issue because they are concerned and worried. The stress, their, the kids are stressing out. They have to walk back home in the middle, the winter, cold weather. Sometimes they fall and they get all wet. Most of the parents, this is maybe something simple and, you know, maybe not an issue for many, but many of those families, they don't have washer and dryer at home. So when their kids come all wet and dirty, they don't have that many clothes for the next day. They can't washer and dry and the next day, nothing happened. They have to wait for the weekends so they can go to the laundromat. And so this is a big issue for them. Unfortunately, basic needs is a major issue. For them to be here is a big accomplishment. It's a big thing. And so we hope that you really listen to the voices of people who are having a struggle just to be here. And, you know, transport, it is important, the EOL academic support or teachers, special needs, it's crucial. But at the same time, if you don't have transportation and you have a way of bringing kids to the school, no matter how great and how beautiful, how new, how big is your school, kids are not gonna come, not gonna be learning. They're gonna be worried about all of the stuff. Those are little things that for them, it matters. Maybe for other people with other things that are not even a worry in their mind, in your mind, but for them it's a lot. And as we have learned from the data, forty-two percent are EOL, over fifty percent are immigrant people who are in the low-income status. So please, this is, is huge. It's huge for them. I understand you're gonna take some risks. There are some surplus. Sorry. I'm an interpreter. I should know better. We, we understand that there, there are proposals that are gonna be elaborated, designed, or made. At least three, well, or four, I don't know how many are gonna be proposed. And there are some surplus, some money that can be used. Just, I know that there are many, many needs. There are more experts that need to be hired. There are more curriculum experts and so forth, stuff. We understand the need that the students have. But I think priorities are important and one thing at a time. And if you are gonna be losing students, we might try and to make them feel comfortable so your numbers are not continued going down. What is the point to have a bigger school with complete staff and the students who doesn't, who don't want to come to school because they have to walk back to home in the middle, suffering the cold or even being scared because it's dark and they, somebody can happen to them. It is a huge concern of our parents. Many parents are, I'm worried about my kids. Somebody can come around with a car and steal them and sell their organs or something. They have told me that. We hope that the budget can be distributed in a creative way where we take in consideration the majority of a student population needs. And there is a parent who wanted to be recorded and said a couple words. There are other, a group of couple families, they have to travel to Pennsylvania with him because they have lost a family and they weren't able to come.
So this is a message from one of the parent. So like his concern, I know, we know that there's a lot of things to do with the budget, like infrastructure and a lot of things. But the main reason, like, main thing we are looking for is, again, the transportation. Because if the child goes with a wet cloth, we have no land to set home to dry up and send them to the school the next day. I think that's it, he said, thank you.
No, that's still on there, sorry.
So please, so, he said, please interpret, interpret these things to the school principal, the school board. That is very hard when the kids get home by four or five with a wet clothes and we can't go, we can't drive, we can't go to the laundry and get a clothes because we, we are at homework and we get home by nine or ten or even in the morning. So without, there's no way we can send kids with, without clothes or with wet clothes. So we're looking for two-way transportation, please, please, please. Yeah, we, we have been talking about asking for transportation for a long time. So I, we know we are getting one way, but we are looking, we requesting for both the ways. And says, please interpret these things to the board and thank you.
I'm, I'm, I am very sorry for taking a lot of your time. But it is important that the board and the staff administrator understand the life of these people, okay? They go to work at three until one, one-thirty. They get home around one-thirty and they go, you know, they say, they take a shower and then they finally go to sleep at two-thirty. They wake up at six-thirty to help their kids go and take the bus or walk with them to school. They only sleep three or four hours, they told me. But at, at two-thirty, they have to get ready to go to work so they can come and pick their kids up. So that is the reality. And then when their kids arrive, they are wet, dirty, and they don't have a way to wash those clothes or to dry them because they don't have that equipment for this. Just to wanna make sure things are clear. Thank you for your time, I'm sorry for taking a lot of time.
Thank you. I'm gonna close the public comments so we can move on to the focus on learning because I know that we have students here and teachers. But first, thank you for your comments. And I know that we, as a board, will take them into consideration as part of it. At this moment, we're gonna move to focus on learning. We're also gonna move, the rest of the agenda is consent on agenda. Unlike last week where we went straight into the budget talk, this is a regular school board meeting. Let, stop and pause so you can translate.
Hussein's not gonna be able to speak after this.
Yeah. I would encourage you all to stay, but I understand that you have, you know, some of y'all may wanna go home, so we will not be offended. If you want to go home, please note that all these, as you notice, have been publicly recorded and can be made, are available to the public for future translation if you want to listen to the rest of the board. So focus on learning, which is what some of our students are here, will explain. It's basically some of the good things that are going on in our, in our school district and being explained by some of our students. And one of the bigger topics that we are engaged with is trying to figure out how do we incorporate more of the student voice on, onto the school board. The rest of the meeting will be some of the regular board. You know, we, we look, we vote on consent agenda, which is basically items that we have examined in the past, approved policies. And then we're gonna be examining other policies on like how the board interacts and whether we're doing our job. And then we will invite, then we will have a kind of a discussion on the budget again, learning on the lessons that we had from the past week. December 4th. So at this moment, I'd like to invite the students and the teachers for the focus on learning to the table to partake in the discussion.
Come on up, Nellie. I'll do a brief intro. So you can either stand or you can join, sit at the table, whatever you're most comfortable with. Okay. And I wanted to just say something quickly in that this is a real opportunity in that the board had already decided that they really wanted to work on how do they really incorporate student voice into figuring out whether the school district is making progress on our goals. And while they, while they were thinking about that and trying to figure out how to do that, some of them went to some presentations in a class that's called Culture and Community, a fantastic new class that Nellie Maylie and another teacher, Luke Dorfman, have started in the last couple of years and heard some incredible student presentations that were about how students can become more involved in making our school district a better place. So we've been able to move very quickly and I thank Hussein and Evelyn and Nellie for being here tonight on short notice so that they could be really responsive to the board's needs. And I would just turn it over to Nellie to get us going, thanks.
So it's great to be here, thank you for inviting us. I'm again, Nellie Maylie, I teach the Culture and Community class with Luke Dorfman. And this really happened organically and it's great because we offered students a chance to use the liberatory design process. And that's a process where you try to make change and particularly with equity in mind. And so students...
I'd let them translate.
Oh, sorry, yes, I should. And so there were multiple groups in the class and two of the groups chose to take on the problem of student voice in the school. And that's where Evelyn and Hussein can talk more about their findings.
Hi again, my name's Hussein Amori, I'm a junior here in Winuski. And so using like the liberatory design system that Ms. Maylie just talked about, we, we went on and focused on student voice. And what we basically did was again, we first like interviewed some of our friends in a, in a school system. I interviewed a friend of mine who talked about how in Winuski, student voice is not like valued that much, especially when it comes to like some of the ELL students that we have here. And that is like largely to, to the high, like they don't, cannot speak English. Well, so people, I don't know, might judge them for, I don't know, for, for not being capable of actually making change in the school. But that is like not to say that like, I don't know, Winuski doesn't value student voice. And I think for the past couple of years with Ms. Principal Jean, the leadership team that we have here has like allowed someone to come in and I should, I should, you know, put the input on like something that's going on. And that's always Lindsay, Lindsay who's like in charge of advisory has like created like advisory program where a kid can come in and just talk about like what they want, like advisory. And I know what you, like, what you might want to try to say here and, oh, that's, Hussein, that's great. But like, it's still not enough, like, like in those programs that you see, like leadership team and like advisory, not many kids are represented, like especially the ELL kids. Not many of them like are, like, I don't know, in that, in those groups that you put the input, like, put the inputs on those issues that are being talked about. Like as an ELL student myself, as a, like, as a past ELL student myself, I think this has been a big issue for the past couple of years that I've been here. And I think it's an issue that has got to change.
So I'm gonna add on to what he said and go a little bit more depth about liberatory design, which starts with notice. And so in our class, we started talking about what we noticed about issues in our school and in our community. And that is based on our own bias and our own understanding of our identity and ourselves. And then we moved on to empathize, which is where we came to interviews and talking to our peers and our families and our community. Can really get into the community mostly just in the school as well as our peers, just to talk about what they, their reflections and their own bias so we could fully understand the scope of the issue for all of us. Yeah, sorry. So after understanding our bias and other people's bias and the true, like, true understanding of what we needed to change, we wanted to find that. So we used the statement, how might we? So we took that issue and changed it to how might we statement? How might we reach out to the school board? How might we connect with our community? We then came to the step of ID eight, which is, we knew what the problem was. We knew what we wanted to solve. Now we had to think of ways to solve that, so solutions. We came together, we had all split as groups, and we came together to talk about how might we solve this issue? And our main decision was to use, implement a student government. And we have a couple of students who have transferred into Winuski High School that have had student governments in the past. So in our ID eight phase, we took, looked at their previous school's student government as well as we looked at national student governments, did some research and are now still in the process of ideation about what a student government in our school would look like. We've had one previously, we're reaching out to teachers about what it looked like in the past. So as we move into next semester, we're hoping to start testing. So we're looking at the idea of having a president, a vice president, a junior vice president, and then an underclassman vice president. Having committees that would represent parts of our community, especially supporting the ELL students who might not have that voice. our community, especially supporting the ELL students who might not have that voice. So as I mentioned, the last two steps are prototype and test. So we're hoping to prototype and test throughout our next semester to be able to come up with something to reach out to all of you in a more regular time period, in a way that's connected with the school and really has represent, like represents our communities and our teachers and our students and our ELL. So that's sort of what we're focusing on this year. It's been a little bit bumpy since we've had so many presentations and conferences, but I'm hoping that next semester it'll be a little bit easier just to really reach out to you guys. So, thank you to the girls. One other thing that I forgot to mention is a part of the reason, as I mentioned, the ELL program that you wanna have a voice for is also the curriculum-based opportunities and a lot of students have found it to be lacking in the sense of they sort of hit a wall of core classes. So you take science to a limit and then where's your next step? So we have a bunch of students who are really hoping to be able to connect with you guys on the next steps for our curriculum and with the new grading system, how we can implement and align those with those classes and make it more accessible to all students and parents. Because I found that there's a really hard wall between the understanding in school and outside of school. So.
To kind, you know, add on what Evelyn just said, like in our school, we have like what we call like the profanity-based grading system and like a lot of my peers don't understand it. I mean, like, I love it, it's great. I like, in many ways, so don't understand it. And I believe just like having that, I don't know, student government inside like the school system would like, you know, help because maybe like, I don't know, kids like myself, like, I don't know, engage in the type of conversations that you guys usually have on like the profanity-based grading system and like, how can we improve it? How can, you know, we make it more like understandable for the community? And yeah.
And then we're ready for questions if anybody has any. Yeah.
The board first for questions. And please, I hope, actually, it would be cool if you could sit down so you can be part of the discussion. And so, and because I, I think it's very symbolic if you sit down and know that you're joining the table. Because I, I want you to know, I want you to know that I think truly the board here really sees you as equals and equal part in this and finding your voice. And I'm hoping that we can move forward on what you're asking for.
One of my questions-
I was gonna get the translator and then, sorry. Go for Tori.
One of my questions is how can we use the conversations that y'all are having and the process that y'all are having with this new proposal that we're getting from Up Learning, which is trying to help us learn about a process through conversations of how do we, at this level, make sure that there's student voice involved in decision-making? Like, it has been amazing to have student representatives and y'all are incredible for being here and joining in on the conversations. And what's the next step for that besides just being here as representatives? And we have so much to learn from what y'all have gone through in your class and what you've come to and your, your thinking too.
Before you answer, let me translate.
Yeah. That makes sense.
I think like one of the things that you guys could do as a board is like, you know, try to get the news out, like, you know, like try to share what you like, what you talk about in this group. Oh, sorry. Try to get what you talk about in this group to the, to the students. And I don't know, try to like, I don't know, realize like the student presentation in Winuski is a little bit low when it comes to like issues like this. Maybe try to get like liaisons in, in the issue as well. And, you know, try to get them to have conversations with a kid that can actually, can't actually speak English very well. And maybe, I don't know, that might be the best way to get the news around about like this type of like conversation that usually happens in this table, on this side of the table.
I really appreciate hearing the process that you came to this decision on. I am curious, would you say that a majority of the students supported the idea of a student government? Or was it just a few who really were strong proponents of it?
Um, I would say both. I think that it was, we, so essentially, we had a full class of around 20 students. Yeah. And so we split that 20 students up into two groups of activities in the community and then school-based learning, understanding more of what we wanted to do within the school and curriculum. And then that broke into student voice and then curriculum. So it was a core, like, students of around five people, but in the end, we had a lot of, the empathy interviews were a really big part of our decision. So talking to other students in our group influenced the final decision that we actually made. So I would say both. Yeah, okay.
So students would run, teachers would choose a pool, and students would vote on the most suited. Does that make sense? So it would be the original pool of rank, ten students would run as president. The teachers would pick the top three out of their list and then students would get to vote who they think would be best.
So out of the three, it could be like a popularity vote?
No, it's not a comment on that. Is that okay? I want to add. So just like add more on that. I think, I don't know, people like kind of, you know, on the both sides because like, people like were like more like, I don't know, concerned about like recognizing, like recognizing the idea, like the idea, like there's like, I don't know, a lack of student voice in Winuski. But people like were not like into, I don't know, trying to, I don't know, change that. And I think that's, you know, mostly due to the fact, like, I don't know, a lot of kids can, you know, get involved with this type of like, you know, community engagement, community change because, you know, they have a lot of issues that have to do with their home. Like, people like really, I don't know, on top when it comes to, okay, when it comes to actually recognizing, okay, there's an issue like in the school and we need to change it. But like when it comes to actually, you know, being part of that change, like, people had, I don't know, some struggle with it. And that's, I think, why we had, you know, people saying, ah, this is great. And we had some people saying, oh, this might not be so great.
Okay, so, yeah. Let's, let's not waste time. So I just asked Evelyn if we were to have a student government, how would, how would the students selected, or how are the students going to be selected? And because I was concerned about it being a popularity vote, like choosing the funniest or something like that.
But like, we've kind of changed that in the past with using the polls that we did during Alex's year, no, Destiny's year. And that wasn't really a popularity vote because nobody knew who was the person that wrote it. So.
Do you wanna, do you wanna say what you were saying to him?
Yeah, so what I was saying, oh yeah. So in response to that question, I would say that we haven't fully made a decision yet. That's, we're gonna do a deeper dive next semester. But I really appreciate your concern and obviously your ideas. I think that's really important and we will take note of it.
Comments from the board?
From the board?
From the, and I can, well, I want to be careful of opening that one. So let me keep it to the board right now. Any other questions from the board?
I think my big overarching question when I tried to speak to prior was how do, how do we access you, the students, to lead us in moving towards more meaningful student voice in decision-making at this level? Like, y'all have done a process and we're looking for a process to get to where, where would we go with student voice making meaningful decisions on this board? How does that work? I don't, we don't know how that works. I think that's how y'all started your process. You didn't know what was gonna come out of it, but you had a process that guided your thinking and your interviewing and you, you used something to get you to a place that you're gonna start testing and protocoling. So I would like, and it's, it's a rhetorical question because I don't think there's an answer. But that's sort of my goal for us as a board, is how do we use you as leaders to help us find ways to use your voice here, meaningful, more meaningfully. Yeah.
So to build upon what Tori has said is that I think from the board, almost if I look at all the board members here, I want you to use this, don't be afraid to come to us, as part of the process in designing your student government in the next semester. The same interview process that you did with the students, I guarantee all of us, I hope I'm not speaking for all of us, but I am unfortunately. Me personally, I think all of us would be more than happy to be part of that interview process, to figure out how we can strengthen the bond between the student government that you're gonna propose to us and how we can support to make sure that, and I want, and this is a key word, the key three words that I think of, effective, efficient, and sustainable is part of your design. And I encourage you to do that. And you know, if you can, I'm sorry, I shouldn't let the translators translate. And the final comment I have is if you can, please send us the dates when you do your final presentations in your class because I guarantee you, if you give us ahead of time, all of us and the board member will be here. And I also encourage our audience and the public to come see that presentation because I know it will be outstanding. And we'll stop there and then I'll have one, and then I'll dismiss if there's any last comments to be made. Okay. Sophie?
Okay, I have a question for you guys. Okay, since, you know, you saw the student government and eventually it just disappeared. That was probably because of the reasons that nobody wanted to be involved in the student government. So how are you gonna continue making a student government relevant in the school, especially since last year when we tried to get more people to join for the student reps? There was only a few. So.
Okay, so to come back on Sophie's question. Basically, what we came up with is create student government that meets everyone's interest. Because we know like in school, like people have different interests. Like people play sports, people do music, and maybe having, you know, committees that deals with sports. And that was it. And people are like into prom, maybe like create committees that really deal with, you know, prom and everything that goes into it. And I don't know, just like try to find, you know, ways that like everyone's interest is me. Because I feel like the past student government that we had, it was big, like all about school. And I can tell you that much, like a lot of my peers that I know like don't really like about what goes in, in school. So again, like what we came up with was trying, you know, find a solution that meets everyone's interest and like everyone's satisfied.
Yeah, I talked, I talked to Ms. Puckett, so I actually, like, she told me why they ended it. So I didn't add on, but you should totally come in, like, we need community members and you're not like, you still go to school here, but like, it'd be helpful.
Any last comments from, or if I open up, any last comments from their student group? Just to put this on the record, I just wanted to make sure that we thank all the students for your time and valuable, like, please know that we heard your voice. I also wanna thank Hussein for also coming in as a translator.
I knew that was gonna be my job, but I went with it.
You have some makeup work to do. Just kidding.
And I know you have a lot of homework, but I do hope that you contributed to the community. And also, I want you to thank your community members who came here to this member, because we, we do hear their voices. It's just problem solving that we have to do to a certain degree. But just thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks. So at, this is where I dismiss the students.
You can, yes.
Yeah.
Just make that distinction that-
Just make that distinction that we're moving into the next part.
Yeah, at this point, we're gonna move into the consent agenda and I know, is this like finals week and kind of stressful for y'all? Two final weeks.
Twice as smart.
And so um I, I, unless you have other comments that you wanna like feedback, I'm more than happy to kind of let our student reps go because it's really about policy so that you can go study. But you are always more than welcome to stay for the exciting budgeting kind of component of our meeting. Uh well, well, if you don't, we could, yeah, do a quick report? What? We, we should, unfortunately. Yeah, not unfortunately, fortunately, oh yes.
Well, if, hold on a second.
Wait, hold on, let me see, I think it.
Thank you, Beer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, and so she's considering translating what they missed while he was talking.
Mm-hmm.
I hope Corley is not telling a beer she has to stay, because that's not her, not her job.
Sorry.
No, it's, you know, it's.
Why don't you just?
Uh so I can start with, um so right now during this time of the year, a lot of students are applying to colleges and they're worried about that process. And a lot of concerns that I've been hearing were um things related to GPA and how it's limiting opportunities. So personally, I applied for something and um for a scholarship for something that I wanted to attend. And uh the, the lady who was in charge of it emailed me back and she said that my transcript was not good enough because it didn't have grades and they didn't really know how to evaluate how I'm doing academically in school. And uh what I've been thinking and talking to my teachers about is we can have a proficiency-based grading, which is required by the state, and have the option to keep a GPA because a lot of scholarships out there require you to have a minimum score on your GPA.
Can I just clarify one thing?
Yeah.
That was not the college application that you were referring to?
No.
It's a different activity.
Okay.
But it's still limiting.
It was a little confusing, I just wanted to clarify because colleges are, yeah, we're not hearing that from colleges, but you're, it's a different kind of program that you were applying to and they were saying they wanted a GPA from you. Yeah, for your application.
So can I just clarify though, that would it be possible to give students who are trying to find scholarships that are outside of the college venue to be able to get a GPA so that they can have access to scholarships? Because if it becomes a barrier in any way.
Yes, it will be a translated, it would be a translated GPA.
Right, but it's.
But it doesn't exist right now at the moment.
And right now, it's not standard practice to just give that to students. It has to be requested.
We're just worrying for the senior group right now because we don't know what to do.
Right, well, I'm a little worried because we went to a proficiency-based system knowing that colleges, that they would know how to translate and that we even brought them to our table.
That's why I'm making the distinction, she wasn't applying to college.
No, but she was applying for a scholarship to get to college.
No.
Right?
The scholarship was for a different program.
Okay, but still an opportunity to, something that you wanted to do. So I don't wanna, I don't want any barriers to be thrown up with this new system.
Yeah, because especially since we don't, we haven't like gotten back our scholarship um applications or um news about them because um right now it's starting to happen. Everyone's starting to apply for scholarships. And um knowing that the requirements have a GPA, we're just curious how we're gonna get the scholarship. Especially since it's gonna be easier for other schools to get it because they have proficiencies and GPA.
Another thing that I noticed is that for the students who are in upper bound, upper bound usually makes students um apply for early, like do early decision and stuff like that. And majority of the students who did that from our upper, upper, upper bound program is the BHS students because they have, it's eas, it's way easier than, because they have their grades and stuff. And also for our transcripts, it requires a little bit more work for students because we have to write a statement about ourselves and include all our projects in there. I think showing your work in your transcript is, is great, it, it's great, but we also want grades. And um another thing that I was, I always wanted to be a part of moving to the United States was the National Honor Society, which also requires a GPA. Yeah, and I'm grateful that I'm in a tech so I can join the national tech, the technical one. But I would really like to have the, the other one.
Yeah, and I was talking to Ms. Green earlier this year about the National, National Honor Society, but um I heard that we won't have it this year and everyone was really bummed, so now I'm hearing that we're trying to figure out a way that we're gonna get like some kind of recogni- recognition. But they don't know how to determine who's top of the class, who's um doing well.
Oh, so this is a huge change from just even last year?
Yeah.
So all those honor pieces are no longer in place?
We don't have honors or anything. If you're doing very well, the only thing that is, like the only thing that shows that is your proficiency. Like, let's say I want to um be in, in, I wanted to take an English class. If I'm a soph- a sophomore, I can't get any, like if I'm a, if I'm a freshman, I can't get any more than a seven, even if I do exceptionally well, because that's how the system works. No matter how well you do, there's, uh I think they call it capping or something. Uh like the teacher can't give you more than a certain level on the scale. So I don't know, the, we don't know who is doing really well in the classes.
Yeah, because it also depends.
So there's a cap on how well you can do in a class?
Sort of.
Is that true?
It depends on the teacher, because some teachers don't have like a clear understanding of where they can put you at.
But isn't it written out?
Yeah.
In a learning scale, it's across the wall.
Yeah.
So my, yeah, my plan in my freshman year was I knew that I wanted to, to do Health Science Academy my junior year. So I wouldn't be able to fit many classes, so I, I took the, the required freshman humanities, which you're supposed to. And I took an additional um like history class, not freshman level. It was like, it was, uh my classmates were mostly juniors and seniors and sophomores. Uh and they let me in that class to take it just because I wanted to. But I, and I took it mainly because I wanted to um get like an eight in my history requirements, which is the graduation level. But all they gave me was a seven and he was like, because you're a freshman, even you're, even if you're in this higher level class, you can't get a good grade, so now.
From your experience, it wasn't based on your, your performance and your understanding in that class, it was based on your grade?
Yeah, so right now I'm having trouble like getting my civics requirement done because if, if I did, if I got what I worked for in my freshman year, I wouldn't be facing this problem now. So I have to do more work.
I am confused, because my assumption, my understanding is, and maybe, maybe there's some misunderstandings here as well, but I think that the whole, there's a lot, the whole idea proficiency is to be able to move at your own pace. There should not be a cap based on grade, it's based on your understanding and knowledge within the course.
I think it would be important, and this was on the agenda for this month and we moved it for the student voice piece, to have the update, you know, from some teachers, students and the high school co-principal on proficiency-based learning, including the grading and the transcript and everything.
Let's make that happen, because it's concerning to think that there are barriers not only about our new transcript, but also um within the system of either misconceptions, misunderstandings, or practice, actual practice and experience that you've experienced being held back in your understanding and knowledge.
Yeah, that goes against the whole.
It goes against the whole idea of proficiency base. Yes.
That you can move as slow or as quickly.
As fast as you want.
Towards those progressions, as long as you're showing evidence that you're meeting those very specific, specifically described progressions.
Which is the eight and the nine.
And what year you are in high school makes no difference. So if in fact, that's, that's, that's an issue that we need to address.
I think the other issue that I'm hearing, I'm sorry I'm interrupting because I'm a little fired up, but is um the fact that we, in one year, would change practices around honors, like folks who are actually motivated by such things to, that all of a sudden in one year, for the senior year, all of a sudden it's like we had it last year, now we don't. That's concerning to me, that there's not some gradation of being able to have an understanding before we take things away. And I'm wondering, and I'm gonna use this too, like how might we make it easier to make GPA a piece of the transcripts as, until we get fully understanding that there are no barriers on anything that, of student interest and passions based on not having a GPA? So why would we remove that or not have it, part of it as we sort of explore where? Can we explore where the barriers would come from before we just sort of take it away? That's my question.
This is the student report time?
Yeah.
I don't really, I don't wanna take too much of their time.
No, I'm just gonna put those questions on that, but because it's coming from their experience and, and so I just wanted to articulate that for us, but go right ahead.
Yeah, as you, as you said, like I remember working very hard for my class and then I got a bad grade and my, my mother was like, explain this, and I was like, like, I, 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 I was so confused over my grade. I remember my mom, my mom telling me to go talk to my teacher about it and the teacher was like, I'm confused too and I can't give you more than this.
I had the same experience. Um we, we were capped at six on the GP scale and when my parents were like, why did you get a six? You're supposed to be an eight, which made them really worried and they thought that I was doing really bad in school.
Now I do want follow-up questions, but I'm, I'm hearing that it's student report time because my follow-up questions is, did you take it anywhere else? You know, like how this didn't get solved, because it sounds like this happened to you a couple of years ago.
Uh so yeah, for me, my freshman year, I had no idea what the proficiency scale was. I, I just knew that we were on it and that I was placed in certain levels. And, and then uh when I got bad grades, I was like, I have to make more effort to understand the system. And then I did and it still didn't make sense to me because when I would talk to my teachers, some of them were confused about it and they, they all were really stressed and because they were also learning how to put students on a totally new scale all of a sudden. And um I, I, I still don't completely like it. I think there still needs to be many changes.
Thank you for sharing your experience.
I will have follow-up questions, by the way.
That's why we're here, your voices, yeah.
If you guys, do you guys have any other questions?
Oh, I have a lot, but we might need to move on. I have it done, but it sounds like we might be hearing more about this next month.
Um I don't know if it's on the agenda next month, but in the upcoming couple of months, yes.
I would like it on there sooner, I mean, this is their, this is their year. And, and I don't want this to continue moving forward without more clarification of whether, you know, like honoring your experience.
Yeah, we need to prioritize what is decreasing like our student population. Because a lot of my friends and a lot of people that I know, they're like, I, I can't do L. Venuski, they're not supporting me. I feel like I'm failing and nobody really understands how they're being graded and how they're being evaluated. So a lot of students are leaving.
Thank you for sharing that.
What I would ask for, in, back to policy governance, if the board, someone wants to make a motion to direct me to have that presentation available to you in January, then I would speak to Mike to amend the agenda, the annual agenda plan, to include that at the January eleventh meeting or February meeting, whichever.
From a policy governance, does someone wanna make that motion? I mean.
Yeah, I would like to make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Certainly.
Can I have a discussion? I mean, uh no discussion, um all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So four to, four to zero, so we will move that up to January and we, I hope um with that said, um remember the date and hopefully that it's a clear date so that you can be actively involved in the discussions, because um I think it's clear. And I encourage you, if it's all right with the board, to invite other students to the public part and we'll try to put it closer to the beginning of the meeting as possible.
We'll try to do some work between now and then.
I know, your exams, right, it sounds like they're gonna put that down.
We'll, we'll try to um, after I finish driver's exam, I'll try to um, like meet up more um with, I, I would like to meet with the current principal, I don't think I got the chance to meet him well and talk to him about this and see what we can do.
And we'd like to get Ms. Green involved in, in the G, in the, the National Honor Society.
She's not on it anymore.
Not anymore?
No.
Okay, we'll have to find someone. So, and this is another thing that I'm noticing is like when I ask somebody about who I should talk to, um they, each teacher will direct me to another teacher and I'm like, so who is the actual teacher in charge? So.
So um first, thank you for that. Know that we are listening and we will do our best. Please never lose the spirit that you have in using your voice here. And I know we had discussions earlier before the meeting about the college writing process, but I hope that passion and that strength in your voice is not lost in your personal statements when you apply to college, because that is what we want at the college level. I want you to make sure you take that home with you and, and know that we will do our best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh at this point, I think now that we did the student report, I can, please don't hesitate to, or it's not that I don't want you here, but I also want you to balance and know that academics is very important, but thank you so much.
I just hope this works out because um I'm hoping my graduation isn't a complete flop.
It, it won't. I am gonna move to consent agenda, um is there? Any movement for the consent agenda, is there anything that we need to move out from the consent agenda or is everybody good? Do I have a motion to accept?
So move.
Um discussion? Did I forget something?
Yeah, to accept with the addition of the budget meeting in December.
They already added it during the adjustments interview.
Right?
Yeah.
Any discussions about the consent agenda? All in favor to accept the consent agenda? Aye? Um so the, we have accepted the consent agenda. We are now under executive limitations policy section, um the Winuski School District Capital Project update.
Yeah, so I put in my report the latest and greatest links to the design, to the logistics plan, the phasing plan. Um the only thing that I would add to that is that we are getting near to our, our first round of pricing uh and that we are also in the process of um getting down to a level of, of moving plans. So starting with this spring when we'll have to start packing up certain rooms and then we'll really have to move the elementary out as soon as the school year is finished and have storage plans and then have a plan to move them back into the space that we have, which will be different spaces than they were originally in. And then there will be a series of classroom moves that will happen throughout the project. So all of that, uh all of that work is, is in process and, and moving forward. And uh one other piece would be that we have been doing student focus groups and showing them the three-dimensional walk through the building and getting their response to what they're seeing and their ideas about designs and what we could do with a typical, um the new pod classrooms, what they like or don't about spaces like the Performing Arts Center, the cafeteria, the library, and the main entryway. And that's been really fun to hear from all ages of kids and, and what they think and generally they're very excited about it and think it's, think it looks great.
I add that the 3D thing is available to all of us, so if you can like just scan it and do it, it's actually pretty cool to kind of.
Sure, because they're, they're through the, out the building, right?
There's one right out on the window, Kathy Bray's office here, you can, um, I don't know if we have them online yet. We're, we're getting a whole webpage going that'll have it, that should be out soon, but, and you can even do it right off the computer then, off the file.
Um superintend monitoring report?
Yeah, so no significant changes to the communication and support to the board. I updated some of the years. Um the only uh change was towards the end on. Um, the only uh, change was towards the end on page. Um, five and eleven, to the very last and that you've acted as a quasi judicial hearing body only once. Um, since this report was last done and that was related to a personnel grievance. Other than that, no substantial changes to the, the monitoring report.
Do I have a motion? Is it motion to accept? The monitoring report?
So moved.
Um, discussion? I just wanna just quickly highlight the, the monitoring report has a great conversation about Tom Hare's speech that he did as teacher of the year. Um, for Vermont. If you did not get a chance to read it, I actually had, um, I think just a quick highlight, one of the highlights was when he talks about like having all the teachers actually enjoy the moment because they'll go back to the classroom. And in one of the frustrating moments that he describes with the students is like, how'd you become teacher of the year? And how he describes like that feeling in the moment. Um, and, and the only reason I paid special attention to the speech was because I had a few of the associate deans in the College of Education actually highlight that to me that make sure that I watch or read that speech when possible. Uh, if possible, I would encourage us to figure out a way to get that in the newsletter, um, for December or something if it's, if Tom's alright with that. And stuff is a great moment of what it means to be in Winuski as a teacher. Um, so I think accept the route, um, so, so all in favor of accepting the board monitoring report?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, aye for everybody. So, um, we're now down to, um, the board management delegation.
So, did you just accept the board mon- monitoring?
No, superintendent.
Superintendent? No, we're now moving on to the board, sorry. Um, I think I'm supposed to, this is review at this point?
Um, it can be all of it if you decide. It's listed as review, discussion, uh, and or approve.
Okay.
Is this unity of control?
Yeah. Any comments in terms of additions?
Seems pretty straightforward.
I know, it's very straightforward.
So do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Um, discussion? Um, and then, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, guess we're moving now. Um, governance policy, we're down to section eight. We just had the student report to the board. I apologize to Mike for moving it out of the order. Um, I'll learn. I hope so. School newsletter topics. I actually don't know who's next on board for this December letter.
Super afraid it's me because I have not done anything.
I know it cannot be me.
So that would be for, for February, right?
No, I'm talking about who submitted January.
Who submitted for January?
Did any of us submit for January?
I don't know if Mike has.
Okay, I'll ask Mike and stuff, but I know that, um, I think with upcoming elections, I don't know if you want February as an opportunity to.
Absolutely. I think we can both get something in there.
I think Ann will send around the schedule, but I can go check.
I know, I can't, I can't refine that thing. I should write it down, sorry.
She sent out a schedule, but we haven't liked, and is there any topics that we should be discussing?
That's the big question.
Right.
Well, we're coming up on budget. We're coming up on elections.
Someone could write about our, our, um, plan to encourage more student voice, more interactions, so solicitation of more student voice.
Okay. That's good. I'll try to write it up for the January one. I'm taking tomorrow off, so I'll take some time. Alright? Um, the action board appointment, um, I'm gonna kind of pass this on to Sean to kind of tee it off.
So some of you may remember that we did have a finance committee. Uh, it was Mike DeCaro and Jen Corrigan. And their role was to meet with Rebecca Goulet, finance manager and myself at the end of each quarter. And we would review with them in detail the financial management review by, um, uh, by program. And then there was the cover sheet that you all get that describes the variances and then the forecast for the end of the year. And the effort was to kind of develop some more financial literacy capacity on the board and, and pass over some of that responsibility for communicating the, the, the ongoing financial health of the organization to the board and to the public through the meeting, um, instead of staff doing that. So when Jen left the board, that committee was not reconstituted and has not met in close to a year. And so in talking with Mike in agenda planning, he felt strongly that it was important to bring that back to you all. He would like to remain on that committee and is looking for someone else to work with him. The, the time commitment is four times a year for about an hour to review the materials.
So I'm gonna leave it up for discussion and we can decide later on, but does anybody dying to join Mike?
I'm gonna be with Mike for negotiations a lot, so I would prefer not to be on this committee.
Others? And, and I'm trying to avoid it too because I've been on the city charter. I'm on foundations and, um, and capital. And I don't mind hanging out with Mike even more, but if it's possible, someone else could do it, but I get it and.
Can we table it for next?
Weekend.
Month and then we can get more information about the time of that, like this around the day, school day, you know?
Right.
They typically had been held in the mornings.
Yeah.
You know, seven-ish. They, but we can hold those to accommodate board schedules.
Yeah, let's just table it for next month.
Um, there's, as part of the follow up of our discussion from last month, we, we talked about how do we get a voice up and then there was a, there's now a proposal for how do we do monitoring? So, um, if we take a look at the proposal, are people comfortable? I'm gonna open it up for discussion on this proposal.
Um, yeah, so I looked over this and as a proposal and the purpose of it, it looks great. Um, I think after hearing what our students are doing, it would be, and I don't know if they're in the place for that, but it would be awesome to use a process possibly that they're doing as leads so that we're kind of building off our strengths and assets within the building. So that's kind of where I'm at. I mean, this, this looks good because it's also structured. It moves us through not at a very fast pace, um, but has some clear actionable discussions that bringing us to solutions, I would think. Those are my thoughts.
I mean, it's also reasonable, but I agree with Tori that there may be a chance for this to happen more organically with, um, student representatives and so. Maybe, I don't know. And just my other thought about dedicating our summer retreat to that. Um, we haven't spent like a lot of time talking about our functioning as a board or about like, you know, functioning this meeting or ground rules and it just, that would take up the majority of that retreat. In addition to the other review of the school year and the, and the interactions with the staff and so. Nothing to take a ton of worthwhile commitment, it just would usurp other uses of that retreat.
Other, I mean, I think that's a good point. Sean, comments and thoughts?
So, one of the things that I think about with this is I think it would, it would be important to have somebody who could facilitate and could hold on to the information in between and kind of do think, do some of the work in between meetings. Um, I agree completely with, you know, incorporating, kind of bringing together these diverging needs, which are the board. You've been talking about this and now we've got the students who are, or who got some energy around it. I think a third party could help us to organize and bring that together so that it wouldn't. If it falls on me, it's gonna be hard. I will have to drop something else in order to do that. Uh, or if I have to reach down and, and give more capacity to Gene to do that, he's gonna have to drop something else. So, I think this modest investment of your development, board development dollars would be a good idea. And I know that Harry is very open to, you know, kind of reconstructing in this in a way that would really incorporate the student work that's happening and meet your needs.
I think with that thought, one, I think absolutely there needs to be a third party running this. For between the meetings to make this sustainable, to make it grow. And I think if someone can be, like Harry can be flexible in bringing in our students to be a part of this with us. Um, it'd also be super exciting if the students could get some sort of, something for being a part of it also. Um, I know there's some schools that actually have grants to help pay either for their time or to give, it could be a part of a class. So somehow that there is a, it is mutually beneficial that they get a benefit as well as we do. And having a third party outside crafting that for us so that it can grow systemic, sustainable roots. And outcomes.
Um, I, I think I agree. And in almost like some of redirecting the, taking that point of the summer retreat, maybe putting some of those hours to figure out how to like actually contribute and work with the students a little bit more and, and help with that growing um, a little more organically and how we can get it into the, as a better connector as opposed to just having us sit three hours tall, right?
Yeah, there needs to be students in every single one of these.
Right. And, and even like I, I, I think taking the time for him to meet the students without us and, and like learning, right? Like I don't mind paying one of those hours for him to go into the student groups and listen to their voices. So that it's completely unbiased, it's not, you know, but I, I would sacrifice more of the summer retreat for that.
Sure. And, um, just one last thought here. Outline some comments from earlier. I mean, we could have this as part of our board meeting here on Wednesday at six thirty, but also maybe if we had it for school, it'd be easier for students to be part of that rather than have to come back at this strange time of day.
So, what is our action? Kind of help draft a little bit more editing here on.
I, I think that you would be, um, approving a contract to work with Up For Learning for this purpose. And then I think probably at that first, whatever the first meeting is, you could redefine these activities more. Or I, and or I can take what I heard from you tonight, give that to Harry and he can also do some refining on this before he brings it. You could even, you could even look at it at another meeting before you have him come in and pay, you know, to, for that time.
Would it be wise to go ahead and make the decision to contract with Up For Learning to guide us through the process? And then go from there to start guiding the process, like being a part of guiding that process, but to go ahead and confirm that we want them to.
That would be my recommendation because they also need to kind of get it on their work plan.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, so I think, I think the motion is to kind of approve the contract to start immediately. But like we outline the details moving forward after the first meeting. Someone want to?
Or prove our partnership, our, our commitment to using Up For Learning to guide us through student voice processing.
Right.
And then we can talk about contract later.
Have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second? Discussion? I don't know. Discussion? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so that's four zero. And now we are on to the, um, budget. And this is, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, here we go. Ready?
Go for it.
Okay. Um, not a ton has changed since last week as, as you I think are well aware. Uh, many of the very important numbers like equalized pupil count, um, revenue, uh, common level of appraisal, we don't have those numbers yet. What we did do as was urged by the board last week was to keep sharpening the pencil and go back and see where we might find some reduction. So what I have up here is just kind of the iterative process that's taken place so far. When we first built this budget up from, um, from teachers and staff and Rebecca put it all together and we reviewed it initially, it was at nine point eight eight percent. We, uh, worked, uh, at that budget before we presented it to you and were able to reduce that about two and a half percent. Since last week, we have reduced it another about half a percent, which is about a ninety, ninety-five thousand dollar decrease. We have had, um, um, very little impact on staffing still. Uh, but we continue to reduce a lot of stuff and we, as I'll describe in a bit, we've done some reallocation. So what you have in front of you is just a revised by program, by function, by object. That just, it really shows you the bottom line. I, I will describe to you the changes that have happened, um, since last week to get us down another half a percent. So, um, and, and, and just to go back and explain again, um, what the variances, the, the increases year to, year are. As we talked about last week, the largest is the debt service that we all know about with the capital project uh, of nine hundred thousand and that is about seventy-three percent, uh, of the one point two three million year to year increase. Estimated salary and benefits increase, um, of about four hundred and eighty-seven. And if you, um, remember from last week, that was a bit higher. So we did do some, uh, adjusting of some salaries and benefits. Um, there's no staffing loss in that number, uh, but there's some reallocation I'll talk about in a minute. So that, between those two things, debt service and increases in salaries and benefits, you have, um, actually more than six point eight, or, uh, six point eight six percent. But we've also taken about a hundred and fifty thousand out to get us back to that, um, six point eight six percent year to year increase. Is that clear? Okay. So, to get more specific about the changes, we felt that we could take a half of a position, um, which is worth about forty-two thousand dollars in salary and benefits and we could move that into the CFP, which is our consolidated federal grant, which it would be eligible for. So, in essence, we take relief from the operating budget. We have money in the consolidated federal grant that we can continue with a license position, half a position. So there's really no loss in staffing there. Um, in the triple E, which is early education, um, and primarily serving students with disabilities of, of young ages. Through our fifth grade summer school, we had about twenty thousand dollars that we, that is also eligible to use some specific, uh, a specific source called IDAB, um, that's used to serve students with disabilities. And we feel like we have the budget to do that. Um, and then we had some benefit reallocations. We're always learning. People are changing their allocations. Um, or their elections, I should say, for their health benefits. And sometimes we get some changes that benefit us. So that's part of what that eighteen thousand, if somebody changes from, uh, you know, a family to a two person or a two person to a single, um, benefit election. Uh, outreach and five oh four services, we looked at our actuals from the last couple of years and we felt comfortable reducing in combination those, uh, some of those lines to the tune of about five thousand dollars. And then other, the eight thousand is supplies, furniture, fixtures. I mean, we, we're down to looking at lines and taking two hundred dollars here and three fifty here and so forth to just, uh, continue to find every, every dollar that we can and, um, get this budget down without damaging program. Any questions about those? So, in essence, from week to week, we reduced about ninety-three thousand or a half a percent. So one of the updates this week, and I did forward an email to all of you, so you're aware, it's not official, but unofficially, the arbitrator's decision came out accepting the employee proposal around healthcare, statewide healthcare benefits. So, some of the important points in there, and for some districts, there will be a significant cost driver. We don't believe right now that this is going to be a huge or a very modest increase, if any, for us, given that we were already at similar premiums and that our out-of-pocket was in a pretty good place. Now, we've not had time yet to do exhaustive modeling about that, but Rebecca and I have talked and, and we're pretty confident that we can say to you, we're not going to come back to you and say, we got to add a hundred thousand dollars back into the budget to cover this change.
That's great news.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to say about that?
No, I think, you know, that's exactly where we are, we, we take the risk on the HRA now, doing seventy-five percent. The only real big difference is the first dollar, so we may see the HRA increase a little bit, but we can take some risk with that, that's already built in.
So lastly, is really notes from the state which are not very fulfilling, because we don't have a lot of them. What we do have is we have the estimated dollars that we'll get for Act one sixty-six for preschool students going, going up a little less than a hundred bucks. We know what our yield or base education is, but that always changes year to year. The threshold really is not applicable to us because we're in the bottom quarter of spenders in the state. And we expect, obviously, the homestead tax rate will change as all the budgets come in and get equalized out. And those last two numbers are very important to us, we're hoping that we would have the equalized pupil count, which will help us to start modeling some tax impact for you next week. So we'll still probably have to hypothesize on the CLA a bit, because we don't get that until January first. And we will, our plan is just, the leadership team continues, Rebecca and I continue to, you know, scrape every line of the budget and see where we think we can be willing. We also have made plans, priority plans, if we need to get into program and staffing and make reductions. So those would be available to us and we would present them to you if the board decides in the course of the next few meetings that we need to get to a significantly lower number. So that is what I have for you tonight.
Let the public, as a procedure, to comment, to kind of help guide Sean and Rebecca on the next steps.
For clarification for me, is in the student transportation services, is the.
The morning bus, busing in, in this line, Adam? Yeah, it is.
So we, it is in there, we did, um, put money in there to increase it by probably ten days next year for the morning. The reason that you're seeing the decrease in that has a lot to do with homeless transportation and the outreach transportation. We had a really high spike a few years ago of homeless families and the transportation costs were really exorbitant. So we were budgeting for that, but it seems to have slid down, so we're, we're reducing that part of the budget. So it's not anything to do with regular transportation, it's really around the homeless transportation. And we've had a couple of students that have moved out of the district that required special transportation from special ed services that we have not budgeted for.
I know the budgeting is hard for us, and I think part of the process that we have to do, and before I open up the public comment, I think in due diligence to say that we are doing our due diligence and listening to our community members. I really think we need to investigate, what would it cost? What would it add to the budget? And then actually see what the tax increase is, and so that we provide a fair argument so that it is truly understood on what the implications are on. And, and I'm, I get, you know, I know it's a different, Mike would probably be giving me, you know, different eyes, but I think there have been a lot of people in the last two budget meetings that had taken their time to come here and express their concerns. I feel really bad if we don't do our due diligence to actually put that in, to actually investigate afternoon busing, and then just let's look at what the tax rates are.
So that, we can do that, and it's. It's probably more time than I think it is, but we'll, she'll figure it out. The, so the cost, we can give you the cost based on what we contract with South Burlington, and the question becomes whether they can provide that additional service, because they have all of their afternoon schools that they're serving and their activities. And so that's why they have these buses available in the mornings. So that would lead us then to going out to bid, and last time we did that, the cost was much, much more than what we've ended up contracting with South Burlington, so.
I don't necessarily need to go get new bids, but use that in your orders.
Right, yep.
As models of like what we need to do in terms of our budget, so that we can actually see what are the true implications on the taxpayers.
Right.
Because I think one of the things that we have to remember here is that.
As a board, we are responsible in proposing a budget to the public, but in the long run, it is not us who approves it. It is the, it is the people who vote on those that approve it. And so if we are going to push forward something that the community members are saying that they want, then I also think that the community members need to know that they need to be out there, working with those folks to help convince the budget, right? They're doing their due diligence and making their voice heard here. But they all, and we need to like either say that we've listened and really done our due diligence, and then if we do move forward, then they need to help us also get that budget approved. And at this point, that, my comments are at that, and I would like to, any of the school board members have comments, additional comments about the budget? Then I would like to open it up to our, our budget buddies and, and the community members here.
Just make one more comment about the busing too, I mean, the back of the napkin map is costing us about a thousand bucks a day, right? For the morning transportation, for two buses that do two routes, so you basically can double that, you know, for the afternoon. And we're providing how many days, about a ninety?
We increased it this year, it was, I think we're close to seventy-five this year, we added another ten days in.
Adding ten to that, you take ten off the morning and put ten in the afternoon in terms of a population?
I mean, you could always look at it that way, it really depends on if we can find a provider. And I certainly can talk to South Burlington, and I would reach out to Mountain Transit, who does our other busing, just to get a feel from them of what's available. I, I don't know, I know they're still looking for bus drivers, so that's one of the bigger problems, but I'm happy to do the research and get that information, and maybe, maybe you look at it and you, you have to shorten the number of days and do it both ways. There's a lot of different ways to look at it.
Yeah, there's a lot of different ways, I mean, I would want, if we were going to do it, my recommendation would be that we do it. We've already set up the mornings that we add the afternoons, so the impact, you know, again, back of the napkin here, but you're talking about, about probably a half a percent to a percent increase to the expense side of the budget. So if you think about it that way, I think that's maybe the easiest way to think about it as we move forward and we look at the budget. You know, you think about, okay, if we add a half a percent to a percent, what's that due to the tax impact? And is that something you guys are comfortable with?
And I want to say like, the reason why I think it's important for us to do this analysis is because I did notice that compared to what the community members were asking for, where they're asking for ELL classes more after schools, they have narrowed the point and obviously seemed to pinpoint that we, some of the costs have done due to our new building and our teacher. And it's still important that they do the bus. And so I, I think they have moved a little bit on some of the requests that they have. And so I don't, it is in our best interest to do, say that we listen, so I appreciate, and just see those, right?
Thank you for.
I really have no question or anything to add, it looks like a very meticulous effort to bring it down as much as.
And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but having listened to the community members, and you can ask on the questions, but you hear the demand for the buses.
Oh sure.
And, and so, as a community member, how supportive, you know, and, and, you know, is it all right for us? Like, would you be out there, you know, if we increased the buses, be able to get the other members to say yes?
The other members of the community. Would I jump on that bandwagon and run with it? I don't know. I don't know.
Parents are very committed to achieve transportation both ways. They have been meeting with me, that I just met them half a year ago. And I can express the responsibility that I feel that to explain you and let you know how frustrated they are after being three years not being able to have a bus. I'm sure if you explain them that they need to do work in the community to convince the older taxpayers that this is important, they will take it on, they will take it on even with liaison or without liaison, and they will learn how to vote to make sure they also are able to pass it. They need to learn the education system, they don't know that you guys, the board members here, are their representative. They just start to learn this, they didn't know that the, they, they don't know. The, the three ladies here, this big Swahili, were clueless, I'm telling you, they're clueless that the simple fact that the board members are the superintendent boss, they were like, like that face. I don't speak Swahili, but I understood, they, they didn't have any idea that that was a fact. So they just need, it will take me less than a day to explain those little details to them. In couple meetings, I'll make sure they are jumping and work with you on this, making sure they can do everything they can and to put in those, to start voting, them, all their friends and everybody they know, to knock at the doors, to get all that needs to be done in order to happen, to make that happen.
If they can vote.
If they can vote.
That's a, but that's huge.
Yes.
So, you know, we can't, I mean, I, this, I'm, this is a very uncomfortable conversation for me. The, the conversation about tax and sending people, many of whom don't speak English, to knock on doors, to convince people who do speak English and who may have all kinds of issues, you on the charter commission, to ask that, I think this is a remarkably reasonable request, right? And so as we sit here, we have to, we to talk about ways in which we can reach out and connect with the community. As far as I'm concerned, this is it, right? The biggest statement, the biggest statement that we can make to these communities that we are interested, we care, whatever it is, all of the stuff that we talk about week after week, is this bus. Now, all of you financial people, and I am not one of them, you know, have to work, have to figure all of that out, right? But it, it, for me, you know, this is the answer to the questions that we have been asking, meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. I didn't have any idea that the request had been many years old from, but I can't, I'm, I'm really struggling to figure out why there has been a relative lack of response.
So, I appreciate your opinion totally, and I. I appreciate your strength in which you have said it, because I frankly haven't heard it at this table yet in, in prior years. It has, I think that there's also the reality of, I did not hear, start hearing about the bringing students home from school until this, maybe the spring was the earliest. Okay, so, and our intent all along, when this started five years ago, I remember being with Mike and, and back in the I lab and having a group of families, many, there was like twenty, twenty-five people, and they said, the goal was, and they were working with, with Parents and Youth for Change, was to get kids to school on time and safely. And that's what we responded to and increased, as modest as it might have been, five or ten days a year for the last few years, that's what we've been doing. So, I, yes, I mean, I, I would love to see it in there, and we will figure out how to make it happen. But as always, with a budget, you know, there, there's, there's impacts.
I appreciate you bringing.
This was the first year that after-school has really come to the forefront, and just to say that we hadn't done anything, we've increased this every single year, which for fifty years, Winuski's history, there was no busing, and so I feel like actually we've made great progress over these last three years toward transportation.
I was just about to say, it was great to get the history, because this has been five years in making, and so now I think we've been able to get kids to school on time and having the buses, it, the afternoon is important, and I think that we're hearing that clearly now.
I don't have any children, but I would not like for my eight or nine-year-old child, or even younger, to have to walk home in the dark in the winter.
Yeah.
That does, there's nothing about that that makes any sense to me, but there's nothing about why school districts don't have buses that makes any, I mean, I just.
Yeah, it's just been a history.
That doesn't make, that doesn't make sense.
This wouldn't necessarily solve that, because we have plenty of kids, right, who are in the wintertime, who are doing activities here that are going to end up walking home later in the day.
Okay, but again, you know, that's a, that's an option.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you do, you go after school, or you get on the bus and go home. But I, I mean, I am deeply both moved and disturbed by this evening transportation, and yes, I appreciate the fact that progress has been made, I don't know the history, but I do think this is an issue with some degree of urgency, and I've not seen, I've not seen this in the short time that I've been on the board, parents out in this way, and that for me, that matters to me tremendously. We, this is a call for response, and, okay, we don't have any money or the budget, there will be a budget impact or whatever it is, but I, you know, again, this is a response, this is a tangible response that we can make to that, those communities that have been significantly, we have significantly targeted to say, how do we, how do we bring you? So it's not community dinners, and it's not, no, they want a bus for their children, and that makes sense.
And I add to this then, when we present this to the community, I'm hoping that all of us stand up in front of the community and show the same passion that I'm hearing, because Margaret's right in some ways, like it's a question of who gets to vote. Well, all of us on the school board can vote, all of us have made some kind of commitment to be the voice of the community. And if we're going to go with this, I just want to make sure that we're all there in one voice, knowing that some of us on the school board will face, from our white community members, questions on whether some of us people, school board members are actually residents of Winuski. And so I'm asking, you know, on that part too.
And it will be pushed, because it was a push even for the pilot, I mean, there, there was a lot of pushback on having a bus from the community members when we first started it, so there, there will be pushback, and that we will need to address it, and we need to have a pretty significant
I mean, when you say pushback from the community members, who are we talking about?
We are talking about the fact that it has never happened to Winuski before, so why does it have to happen now? That everybody in Winuski who's ever was born and raised here have been walking to school.
Exactly.
Since seventeen ninety-five, so.
I think legitimately too, we just invested fifty-four million dollars in the school, and so people are saying like, I, I need to know what that financial impact is going to result in my taxes, and so I don't think that necessarily means I don't support busing or don't support community members. Financial realities are a reality for all citizens of Winuski.
Including us.
Yeah.
Just got my new tax bill.
Yeah.
Let's look at it from that numbers, and then also be able to educate all community members on our options and on the pay.
It's never going to be fair.
doing our due diligence and listening to our community members, I really think we need to investigate what would it cost, what would it add to the budget, and then actually see what the tax increase is, and so that we provide a fair argument so that it is truly understood on what the implications are on. And, and I'm, I get, you know, I know it's a different, Mike would probably be giving me, you know, different eyes, but I think there have been a lot of people in the last two budget meetings that had taken their time to come here and express their concerns. I feel really bad if we don't do our due diligence to actually put that in, to actually investigate afternoon busing, and then just let's look at what the tax rates are.
So that, we can do that, and it's, it's probably more time than I think it is, but we'll, she'll figure it out. The, so the cost, we can give you the cost based on what we contract with South Burlington, and the question becomes whether they can provide that additional service because they have all of their afternoon schools that they're serving and their activities, and so that's why they have these buses available in the mornings. So that would lead us then to going out to bid, and last time we did that, the cost was much, much more than what we've ended up contracting with South Burlington, so...
And I don't necessarily need you to go get new bids, but use that in your old bills as models of like what we need to do in terms of our budget so that we can actually see what are the true implications on the taxpayer.
Right.
Because I think one of the things that we have to remember here is that
As a board, we are responsible in proposing a budget to the public, but in the long run, it is not us who approves it, it is the, it is the people who vote on those that approve it. And so if we are going to push forward something that the community members are saying that they want, then I also think that the community members need to know that they need to be out there, working with those folks to help convince the budget, right? They're doing their due diligence and making their voice heard here, but they all, and we need to like either say that we've listened and really done our due diligence, and then if we do move forward, then they need to help us also get that budget approved. And at this point, my comments are at that, and I would like to, I mean, any school board members have comments, additional comments about the budget.
All of that, beautiful.
And then I would like to open it up to our budget buddies and the community members here.
Just make one more comment about the process here. I mean, the back of the napkin, Matt, is costing us about a thousand bucks a day, right? For the morning transportation, for two buses that do two routes, so you basically can double that, you know, for the afternoon. And we're providing how many days, about a ninety?
We increased it this year, it was, I think we were close to seventy-five this year, we added another ten days in.
And you're adding ten to that, you take ten off the morning and put ten in the day afternoon in terms of a calculation?
I mean, you could always look at it that way, it really depends on if we can find a provider. And I certainly can talk to South Burlington, and I would reach out to Mountain Transit, who does our other busing, just to get a feel from them of what's available. I don't know, I know they're still looking for bus drivers, so that's one of the bigger problems, but I'm happy to do the research and get that information, and maybe, maybe you look at it and you, you have to shorten the number of days and do it both ways. There's a lot of different ways to look at it.
Yeah, there's a lot of different ways. I mean, I would want, if we were going to do it, that my recommendation would be that we do it. We've already set up the mornings that we add the afternoons, so the impact, you know, again, back of the napkin here, but you're talking about, about probably a half a percent to a percent increase to the expense side of the budget. So if you think about it that way, I think that's maybe the easiest way to think about it as we move forward and we look at the budget, you know, you think about, okay, if we add a half a percent to a percent, what's that due to the tax impact, and is that something you guys are comfortable with?
And I want to say like, the reason why I think it's important for us to do this analysis is because I did notice that compared to what the community members were asking for, where they're asking for ELL classes more after schools, they have narrowed the point and obviously seemed to pinpoint that we, some of the costs have done due to our new building and our teacher. And it's still important that they do the bus, and so I think they have moved a little bit on some of the requests that they have, and so I don't, it is in our best interest to do, say that we've listened, so I appreciate, and just see those, right?
Thank you for that.
I really have no question or anything to add. It looks like a pretty meticulous effort to bring it down as much as you could.
But having listened to the community members, and you can ask on the questions, but you hear the demand for the buses.
For sure.
And so, as a community member, how supportive, you know, and, you know, is it all right for us? Like, would you be out there, you know, if we increased the buses, be able to get the other members to say yes?
Yeah, the members of the community, would I jump on that bandwagon and run with it? I don't know. I don't know.
Parents are very committed to achieve transportation both ways. They have been meeting with me, that I just met them half a year ago. And I can express the responsibility that I feel that, to explain you and let you know